Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. It is my pleasure to welcome everyone to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee Meeting on Tuesday, March 6th at 8:30. A warm welcome to all our guests, staff, who are here today. It's always nice to see people in the audience, so thank you for taking your time to come. Fellow commissioners, here we go. We will start with public comment. Is there any public comment today? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and that will move us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
In support?
Support.
Thank you. Any items have to be pulled? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda passes. That brings us to item three from the parks, which is the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant submission for Lowell Regional Park. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to recommend to the Board to approve submission of a grant application to the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund to acquire approximately 122 acres of property to expand the future Lowell Regional Park and to commit to funding the required local match if awarded. The 1997 Parks Master Plan identified the southeast region of the county as an area of high projected growth with inadequate parkland to accommodate the future residents. In response, Kent County Parks launched a multi-year phased effort to secure land for future regional parks in the area. One focus has been a large air mixed fields and woodlands south of Lowell. The Parks Department acquired the first parcels for this future park in 1998 and has since expanded holdings to 406 acres. Since 2000, the Parks Department has held a right of first refusal on 180 acres within the regional footprint of the park, 122 of which are now available for purchase. Acquiring this land would permanently protect the very core of the future park. The land features diverse habitats, including wetlands, a creek valley, and rolling open fields. Acquiring this land is consistent with several objectives set forth for the departments, parks, trails, and national areas master plan. The Parks Department seeks to submit a grant request to the Department of Natural Resources, Michigan National Resources Trust Fund requesting 70% of the estimated $976,000 purchase price in grant funds. The remaining 30%, $292,800 will be a local match. The final purchase price will be determined using the DNR appraisal process as required by the grant. An action request to accept the grant, appropriate the grant and match funds, and authorize the purchase will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners if the grant is approved. The county will be notified in approximately December 2018 if the application is successful. If awarded, funds will need to be expended within two years.
Is there a motion to approve? In support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion?
Good stuff.
Yes, Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll have Roger Sabine come up, our Parks Director.
All right. My questions, it deals with both this and the next request.
Welcome, Roger.
Yeah, so looking at, I mean, both, but we'll talk about the details of the second one momentarily. My question for today is, where will the local match come from? And my question for the future is, do we have a long-range plan to fund a true parks acquisition fund? Especially when you look at the map on the Lowell piece and it talks about this is the central part of that park? And if the DNR says no, then, you know, does our right of first refusal lapse? And then somebody else buys it? And like, at the end of the day, we have a plan, I believe we have a plan, we have a good plan to have good regional parks. This clearly is one of those. And why, and I'm all in favor of getting our dollars that have been taken the land scene and bringing them back. At the same time, if they say no, we're like held hostage to somebody else's decision-making process when we've decided we want a park here. And yeah, it costs money, however, can we get there sooner than later to have our own pot of money? So short-term, where's the match going to come from? And second, are we working on a longer-term acquisition pot?
So short-term is, it would be a combination of CIP and whatever other partners we can find. And we tend to be reasonably successful in finding other partners. And the DNR has already granted, one of the parcels we bought here was a DNR grant, the original one. So, you know, I think that bodes well for the future. Our first right of refusal stays in place if the grant doesn't come to fruition. But that still means we'd have to, you know, we're still on the hook to buy it at some point or give up our first right of refusal. Your other questions in terms of the longer range, bigger pot of money is a bigger question. You know?
It's a policy question.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's a board decision on how that happens.
Yeah. So when do we have those conversations?
It's a policy question, and I'm sure we'll have those conversations.
This is something that we'll wrestle with as we get through our budgeting processes, we always do each year. And, yeah, the availability of resources is really, at the end of the day, is the question mark. How do we do it with all the other demands?
Wayman? I'm sorry, can you re-
I said, with all the other priorities, demands, we will have to make sure that we keep that in mind as we identify dollars for this plan. So it's, unfortunately, we're not in a position yet with our economy and with our constraints with the way that revenues are pulled from property taxes, that is our main source of funds. We have to make sure that we're in a position to provide these dollars. We haven't been as of the last several years, a result of how the economy has gone and how we've been capped in our ability to provide revenue stream. So parks acquisition along with any other fund, we will have to assess whether or not we have the ability to place additional dollars in that particular fund based on available revenues. It's a good question, and we wrestle with that all the time because we do want to live up to the plan as best we can.
Mr. Morgan?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Hey, Rog, are there any other properties that you have first right of refusal on in this group? I know you've been working on this particular area a long, long time.
Yeah, the property, if you look at that aerial photo, the property directly south of the yellow, we also have first right of refusal.
Okay, and as we head into the CIP process, I know in the past, I don't, I'm a little nervous about referencing the past, but when you could go get partners, like, for example, up in Luton Park, you were able to get some townships to kick in some money, and that definitely bodes well in the CIP process, right? If you can go out and get other partners to-
It helps, having the grant alone would help in the CIP process. And we'll know in December, but that's sort of-
I just hope you keep your string going.
It's not a sink with the CIP process.
Thanks, Roger.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, Roger.
Good morning.
I was just wondering, is there any plans at all to build any type of structures at all in the future on this parcel, or is it just going to remain open?
No, we would develop it as a sort of a typical county park where it's mainly natural resource-based, but there would be some facilities sometime in the future.
Do we, I don't know, given the recent history with some of the water problems, areas that we never knew existed, is there any type of process of testing? Any, I see you got a lower area there that traditionally out ag areas, they used to fill that sometimes with things, farmers, a long, long time ago. You don't necessarily know what's in there until you start digging. Is there any process of checking the water in that specific area, or is that not-
We haven't in the past. We've never, you know, had a problem that we're aware of, so it'd be a matter of, if we thought there was a need to test, we would certainly test, but I, we are required to go through an environmental review as part of the DNR process, so neither Kent County or the DNR is funding something that has issues. So that would go through the environmental process, which we hire a firm to do that. And so we think we're pretty safe on that.
If that'd be worth it, taking a little water sample out of all these spots, just-
So they do a baseline environmental?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Milton?
Thank you, Chair. And actually, I'll call you to answer part of my question. So the thought is that there will be, as he said, structures available that might make it family-friendly as far as maybe grandma and down to little kids, as opposed to just a park, not just a park, that's terrible. I love parks that don't have anything, but so that it would be more open to-
Yeah, it'll be pretty typical of what we have in terms of facilities and maybe looking a little more modern than Townsend Park in Fallsburg, but it would still have facilities there for people.
And perhaps this is just not, everyone knows this answer and I don't, but how often, if ever, can grants be petitioned to the state, to the national park idea, the state parks, and for funding there? Is that-
The focus is on the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, and grants are, it's a once-a-year cycle, submitted April 1st.
Okay. Roger, do you have support to fill out the grant paperwork? Is it already complete?
We're in the process of writing both grants right now.
And is that something that needs additional help? Or is that something that you and your department and Linda, Corning, I mean, who actually does-
We write them. I write most of it. Landscape Architect provides some assistance, as well as Bob. So we do it in-house. It's in process right now. And we'll talk to some of the organizations around town to get letters of support. And that's how the process works.
I just want to emphasize the value of having our ability and our team to fill this out on their own. This is expensive, this is complicated, this is time-consuming. The process for grants is significant, and it's not something that I think should go without recognition and a thank you for lifting that and making that happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Bukowski?
Real quick, following up on Commissioner Milton's question and Roger's kind of tip of the hat my way about community partners. Disability advocates typically, if not always, sends a letter of support. It is, the good news is the DNR looks at accessibility of the proposed parks and are they really partnering with the local disability community to make it happen? And so our letter of support isn't just writing a letter, it is a commitment. The park works with us, we touch base with the architects and things, again, making sure that it is as accessible as possible. You know, sometimes the glaciers left pretty steep hills, and so, so the ADA makes exceptions for glaciers of a few hundred thousand years ago. But for the most part, our Park Department does a fantastic job working with us and other community partners on having the best parks for everybody. So it's good to know.
Okay, anything else? Roger, you just might want to sit in the front row.
I thought I would.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to agenda item number four, also from the Parks Department, Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant submission for Millennium Park. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to approve submission of a grant application to the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund to acquire approximately eight acres of property within the footprint of Millennium Park and to commit to funding the required local match if awarded. Within the footprint of Millennium Park, fewer than 20 parcels remain in private non-utility ownership totaling approximately 150 acres. Completing the park by acquiring such in holdings is an ongoing effort. If the parcels are not purchased when available, the county will forever lose the opportunity to complete contiguous natural areas of secure or secure other core locations. Three of these parcels totaling approximately eight acres are now available for county purchase. This land is arguably one of the most visible locations for approaching visitors, being at the southwest corner of Maynard and Butterworth intersection. Acquiring this land would allow the county to naturalize and beautify the park gateway and would continue a string of land purchases leading up to the property's west border. Acquisition is also consistent with several objectives set forth in the Department's Parks Trail and Natural Areas Park, Natural Areas Master Plan. The Parks Department seeks to submit a grant request to the Department of Natural Resources, Michigan National Resources Trust Fund requesting 60% of the estimated $490,000 purchase price in grant funds. The remaining 40%, $196,000, will be a local match from various sources. The final purchase price will be determined using the DNR appraisal process as required by the grant. An action request to accept the grant, appropriate grant and match funds, and to authorize the purchase will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners if the grant is approved. The county will be notified in approximately December 2018 if the application is successful. If awarded, funds will be, funds would need to be expended within two years.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Mass?
Thank you, Chair. Just, I guess, for Roger.
Come back up, Roger. Thank you.
Wyatt?
Good morning.
So this one, we're going to get 98, or projected 98, from the Kent County Foundation. If this grant isn't awarded, can that 98,000 go towards the other parcel? It isn't dedicated to this particular one?
The Park Foundation has money that's dedicated to Millennium Park, so.
So it would have to stick with this?
Yeah.
It could be used for the Lowell one?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Been a long time, Rog, you've been working on this project.
Well, this, again, is a kind of a slam dunk.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, this particular parcel is as much of a no-brainer, I think, as we could have in the sense that when you look at the map and our commitment to Millennium Park, absolutely when these parcels come up, you know, we need to, we need to get them. My question is, you know, because when you talk about, you know, this is the welcome to the park when you turn off Butterworth on a Maynard, and it looks bad in the aerial photography, and as you know, because you probably drive by it way more than I, those two big parcels south of Butterworth are even uglier in person. And so, I mean, how much conversation have we had with those folks and their opportunity to move their business elsewhere and us to kind of clean up those, both sides of our welcome to Millennium Park?
Well, we've been talking to both of them and for years. And so it's just a continuous conversation over time. It's one of those things, we don't have the funding to do it right now. If we, you know, had some serious money, there's interest there. We just have to, there's interest on their part in terms of selling, and we just need to have the pot of money.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the smaller pieces of the puzzle here, Rog, do you have any agreements with those property owners?
The one in yellow?
No, no.
Or the other ones?
The open pieces.
Again, we have talked to them, but since it's a money issue, I mean, we talked, but just say we're interested. Some are interested and willing, some are less so.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, on the pricing, we're trying to pick off all these remaining parcels within that footprint. Traditionally, how has that affected the pricing as we're losing? Are we staying flat with our prices? Is that being reassessed every year, what it's worth?
Well, Millennium is a slightly different story only because of, in the early years and with some other partners, we probably set the threshold higher than what we might in other locations. And so that history sticks with the people that live there right now, our own property there.
Right. I mean, we're not that concerned about obtaining every single property, I wouldn't think, if it just physically doesn't make any sense at some point. I mean, no one's going to be pushed off their property, there's no eminent domain or anything like that.
I don't see eminent domain happening for this. You know, I, one of the questions, there's the economic question of what's the property worth and what are you going to pay for it? And there's also, you can flip that question around, and what is, what's the value to the park not to have those properties be commercial and turn them into parkland? Those are two different ways to judge the value of the property.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Roger. That brings us to item number six from the Sheriff, addition of two full-time corrections deputies. Simon?
Five.
Five.
Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to add two full-time correction deputies assigned to oversee work release inmates at the Department of Public Works Recycling and Education Center and appropriate $271,810 to the Sheriff's 2018 Special Project Fund Budget from the Department of Public Works. The Kent County Sheriff's Office and Department of Public Works piloted a program in November 2017 to staff a deputy at the Kent County Recycling and Education Centers to oversee approximately 15 inmates in a work release program to provide workers for the process line. Corrections deputies provide oversight of inmates while away from the correctional facility, transportation to and from the recycling education center, and increased security should an emergency arise. The cost for wages and benefits for two full-time corrections deputy positions and worktime meals for inmates is $271,810 and will be fully funded by the DPW. In event funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations. This item was recommended for approval by the Legislative Human Resources Committee at its February 27, 2018 meeting.
Thank you, Wayman. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Commissioner Bukowski?
I'll just keep talking this morning. Since I'm the only representative of the Board of Public Works here that has a microphone, I see Commissioner Kornike out there in the back row, who serves with me on that. I mean, there's a lot behind this that the Board has worked with and watched Dar and his staff, you know, put together an excellent proposal. And there is, you know, hidden in here, there's a job reduction. It used to be 28 people working the line at the recycling center, but it's not a bad job reduction because no one wants to do these jobs very much. And so because of some new technology that's come online, you know, we reduced the number of people needed to work at the center and increase our capacity, which is awesome. And again, you know, with the change of a provider last fall, Dar and his staff brought a proposal together, and the result of it is in front of us that not only works, it actually saves money. So the proposal looks like we're spending more, but we're actually spending less at the end of the day. So it's good to see this here, and again, the partnership with the Sheriff's Department and the DPW. So if that gets more questions to mind, let Dar give the real details. Hopefully, I quoted the right numbers and such within that. But again, the most important thing to say is the Board of Public Works has been watching this since last fall and has been very supportive in getting our questions answered at that level. And I think we approved this, right? We had to approve it first to get it here, so.
It's going to be your money.
What's that?
It's going to be your money.
It's going to be our money that the Board has authority over, yes. Our being the wider citizenry, yes.
Dar, do you have any comments on what Commissioner Bukowski just shared? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure.
Can you summarize that, please?
It's a great program.
There you go. There's your summary.
We've used a number of different staffing models in the history of the recycling center. When the 2010, when the single street facility opened, a lot more automation came. 2012, '13, the need to improve the sort quality was in front of us, and that's occurred again in the last couple of years, even though we're challenged sometimes with the value of the commodities. With that, we have to continue to improve the quality of the material that we move out the door. We've used everything from prison labor to work crew to community service to goodwill program, et cetera, et cetera. As Commissioner Bukowski mentioned, last December, we shut down the plant for a couple of weeks to do some significant upgrades, which allowed us to move from 26 people on the process line down to about 16, 17, which is a significant savings. There's some success stories with the pilot. I don't know all of them, but I've heard of two. One is that we, there was a gentleman that was at the jail who was serving time. Because he's paid minimum wage at the recycling center, he was able to continue to make his mortgage payment for the time that he was incarcerated. We have three previous workers who were work released in the Sheriff's Department who have come back since they've been released, and they work for us on a part-time basis through our tenant agency, and continue to be paid and have gainful employment. So we see this as an investment. We think the corrections department needs to have visibility- We think the corrections department needs to have visibility at the site, because at the end of the day, there's a reason why these folks aren't incarcerated and at the jail. It's really a three-legged stool. We use line leads that we recently hired that went through the approval of the Board of Public Works and the Board of Commissioners, who lead the three different process areas. We have the temporary agency that allows us to be able to pay the workers through work release, so they're gainfully employed, they're getting work history, they're building their resume, and our supervisor and our facility manager is committed to them that we will serve as a resume builder and will provide opportunities to let other potential employees and employers in the future know that we'll refer and let them know how they work at our facility. And then the third thing is, of course, the Sheriff's Department, and it is really helpful to allow them to have the oversight, to ensure that the inmates get there in the morning and are able to travel back in the evening. It's just, it seems like the right program at the right time. Overall, as Commissioner Bukowski mentioned, the overall cost of the program is less than what we were spending before, and I think it's, it will serve us well into the future.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Mast?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Dar. That was a good explanation, because I very much support the program. And I had heard, probably it was 2013 then or so, that you were going to be, that the Public Works was going to be disestablishing this program because it was too expensive and wasn't working or so. But now evidently, with the, with your leadership, it's really come along, and now we can continue to partner with the Sheriff's Department to give some work experience for some of these people.
Yeah, you know, the challenge that we had in the past...
I totally support it, I guess. Thank you.
The challenge we had in the past is work crew, which is assigned by the corps. While they were mandated to be there, didn't mean that they wanted to work.
Right, right, okay.
And that really affected us, and it kind of created a negative work atmosphere, where now, my understanding is, there's a waiting list at the Sheriff's Department of those that want to enroll and be a part of the program, because again, they're being productive during the day, they're being paid, they're building work history, they're building a resume. And we have sensed, and when you walk through the facility, you can tell there's a significant difference in the attitude and just the atmosphere, and we think it's been positive all the way around. Work crew is challenging, it was hard to get people, not to show up so much, but to actually try to work, and so this has improved dramatically.
Could I just follow up? Another that this relates, so what do they do? They basically sort the recyclables?
So when the material comes into the plant, of course, it's tipped out of a recycling truck, and it's all mixed together, single street material.
I see it all mixed together.
Yeah, everything corrugated cardboard to tin cans. And so, it's fed in, and we have a number of automated piece of equipment that sort out corrugated cardboard, plastic bottles, a number of different items. But it's still, they need to pull certain, not acceptable materials out, and they provide quality control, and they positive sort, meaning they pick out the good things and let the bad things go by, or materials that we don't want go by. So they're actually on the line, the line's running, we process at about 20 tons per hour, so we can process roughly 160 to 180 tons a day. We operate Monday through Saturday. Finally, been able to take a couple of Saturdays off, but we have a lot of material coming in, and we process material from eight different counties. So they're actually physically picking and sorting and checking the line and creating the commodities, whether it's corrugated or whole beverage containers, mixed paper, across the gamut of what we receive there. We process, we'll process about 35,000 tons per year through that plant.
Anyone else?
Glad to see you.
All right, seeing none, are those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. That will bring us to item number six, also from the Sheriff's Department, to accept the 2018 Michigan Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant and Budget Amendment. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to appropriate $173,126 from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs and the Drug Forfeiture Fund to the 2018 Sheriff Medical Marijuana Special Projects Fund Budget, contingent upon execution of a grant and to authorize the Board Chair or designated to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. The Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Bureau of Professional Licensing Division provides annually the Michigan Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant to county law enforcement offices, as provided for in the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. The purpose of the grant is to provide funding to law enforcement agencies within each county to be used for education, communication, and enforcement of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. The grant funds of $118,314 and the drug forfeiture funds of $54,812, for a total of $173,126, will be used to purchase a rapid deployment vehicle to be used for vice and tactical operations, all of which is detailed on the attached letter. The grant period is January 1, 2018, to September 15, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved and then supported. So we go moved with Commissioner Morgan and supported by Commissioner Mast. All right, questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
I just have a conversion question here, Sheriff, and I, 62 million grams of marijuana seized, I know that a kilo is 2.2 pounds, that sounds like a whole heck of a lot of marijuana. There are, there's over 5,000 persons in Kent County that have a medical marijuana card or license of some sort. And those cards generate the funds to enforce the illegal use of the medical marijuana. And I'll have to say that the vast majority of persons use it legally under the current Michigan law. But they pay the funds to enforce against the illegal operations that are trying to take the whole, the whole system hostage. And it does amount to a large quantity of money and a large quantity of drugs.
Okay, Commissioner Mast?
Thank you. So this amount of money is made available because of the 5,000 that are paying the fees and stuff? I mean, other counties have different amounts? It's not, it doesn't go into a state and then the state distributes it, or where is it?
Well, that's partially correct. The money goes into the state, and then it's redistributed back to the counties, minus a operation processing fee, based on the number of cards that are in that county. And the money is only made available to county law enforcement, not to cities or municipalities. So it all comes to the county. We try to use those funds in a way that support all of the agencies. And of course, our drug team is comprised of East Grand Rapids, Walker, Granville, Wyoming, and we support Grand Rapids and Kentwood. So in essence, this supports every drug team in the county.
So what happens after September 15? Is there, does the fund get replenished?
Well, it's the state's fiscal year, and it'll start all over again.
Commissioner Milton?
Thank you, Chair. And perhaps I'm a little bit off base here, but my question is twofold. Does your officer, your authority as the Sheriff's Department, have any effect on regulating or monitoring how the medical marijuana cards are used? Because as you stated, and I am very aware, they're not always used correctly.
It's a convoluted system, to say the least. There is no public, and law enforcement does not have access to a list of cardholders that we can go out and say, this person's legal, this person's not, this person's legal. So as situations are brought to the attention of the officers, they all get looked at, they all get investigated, and I would have to say the vast majority of them are said, no, you're compliant, you're compliant, even though somebody has turned you in, you're compliant. But on many, many times every month, I wouldn't say weekly, but every month, maybe two or three times, there's a large-scale situation that is illegal that we have to go in and enforce.
I know from a medical standpoint, it's equally as much of a catch-22, if you will, because those who benefit from it really benefit from it. It has a great medical use, and yet there are those, of course, with anything that don't. So my second question is, in your task force, is there any, and I don't know if this would be done at the county level or whatever, it came to my attention, as old as I am, I'm still stupid in many areas, that you can in fact order marijuana online. And does the county get involved in any of that at all, or?
Well, I guess ordering it online, again, if it's in compliance with the cardholder, and you're buying it from the registered provider, and you just simply send an internet message saying, you know, I can buy it from you, and you know, I need to come and pick up whatever my quantity is, that would be a legal operation. But the illegal operations are completely illegal, and they can continue to get investigated to the fullest extent of the law, and both the internet crimes people, as well as the vice people, work on those types of situations. So some of them could be legal, and some of them could be illegal.
I'd just like to say that I'm very happy with my job, and I don't envy you your job.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Chair. I was just wondering, this rapid deployment vehicle, I was just trying to Google what that thing looks like. Is that something that you're going to use daily for other things?
It probably won't be used daily, but it certainly would be used weekly. And it's not a, it's not a tactical vehicle, per se. It's a, we have lots of specialized equipment. I think you've been around and you've seen some of it. Most of that specialized equipment is stored in lockers or storage rooms throughout the department. And when an event occurs and we need that equipment, then we have to have officers go and collect this stuff from here, and that stuff from there, and other stuff from other places, load it in the back of a cruiser, or in the trunk of a cruiser, and then take it out to the scene to deploy it as needed. This rapid response vehicle will allow us to store all of that equipment in one place, and thus, when the need comes, either from our organization or any other organization that we support, we'll have it all together and be able to respond in a more timely manner. It's better for the equipment, and we have all the equipment then at the scene. So it's really a large, I think it's a 16 or 17-foot, for lack of a better word, step van type of delivery truck, but it has multiple specialized compartments in the van part, in the van portion, to store the equipment, as well as provide seating for the officers. So it's a big van with specialized compartments.
Sound like a rocket ship, F-89. Looked more like a big van, but, thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. My question follows up what Commissioner Antor just asked, because, and Dar will get a chuckle, because I asked for a picture last week, and he provided it for something we're buying at the Board of Public Works. So if a picture could be provided by Thursday, that'd be awesome, since we're, at least, if we vote yes in a moment, it'll be on our agenda on Thursday. I mean, my concerns is, I know you and your staff continue to look at the need for additional staff, and this opportunity that, you know, again, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your work, but would it be better use of dollars to hire a couple of additional deputies or a detective and a half to be out, engaging in the community, helping to, again, some of the stuff that you say you don't have time to do, I mean, I'm not saying it's false, I mean, you show us the numbers, that because of just the shrinkage of your force over the past decade due to budget issues, you know, is this not an opportunity to increase the force? And I always have, and I know it's a smaller portion of the population, but there is this complaint that, are we militarizing our police forces? And so it was good to hear that this isn't like a tank. This is a, basically, a mobile command unit that's going to have the equipment easier to be brought there, as opposed to having to load in and go. So, but I personally am concerned of the militarization, and I understand that drug traffickers of the world, you know, at least I see from a distance on TV, are militarizing themselves, how best to respond to that threat? I guess the question is, you know, is, was there a consideration of adding to our force as opposed to purchasing a vehicle?
There was. And the vehicle, and I don't want to minimize it, so please don't take it that way, but it's just a big U-Haul truck. Type of a vehicle. The problem with staff on this type of a grant is that it's, first of all, it's a short-term grant. There's no consistency, there's no guarantee that it's going to be there next year. And so, if we hired, and it would only apply for, it would only support 1.5 maybe officers, by the time we get them trained up, the grant's expired, and I'm not sure we're going to get the grant next year. As well as the fact that we try to get equipment, we try to get something that is more universal and can be used by all of the agencies that, when we support Grand Rapids, or Kentwood, or Walker, or any other agency, that we have something that we can support them all. And so it benefits the entire county, rather than just benefiting the patrol district of the Sheriff's Office.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Sheriff, just to come, I'm trying to get my arms around the scope of this. You have 62 million grams seized that the department has seized. There's 1,000 grams per kilo, and a kilo is 2.2 pounds. So that'd be 62,000 kilos of marijuana, which would be, I think of my conversions, right, 124,000 pounds of marijuana that you seized.
Are you looking at the forfeiture funds that...
I'm looking at the 2017 marijuana investigations, the last bullet point where it says grams of marijuana seized in the letter. I'm just trying to get my arms around how big a problem we have.
Well, it's a huge problem.
Right. I mean, we're looking at, you know, like I said, there's a thousand grams is, you know, a kilo, and a kilo is 2.2 pounds. And so, 62,000 kilos of marijuana were seized.
And periodically, you will, we notify you, and see it in the media, where a truckload, semi-truckloads of it are seized in different capacities. It's a precursor to harder and more serious drugs, as well as other crimes.
I agree with Commissioner Milton. I don't think I'd want your chair.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Chair. Seeing none, are those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to miscellaneous. Is there any Finance and Physical Resource Committee, Commissioner Miscellaneous, this morning? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, March 20, at 8:30. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, March 20th at 8:30.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County. Mas era Kent County.